Transformation starts at the table. And we're inviting you to join us. To take one small step towards your seat at the table. To change our world, we need more than good intentions. We need a process and a platform. And a movement. We invite you to our transformation tables. To join us and learn what it means to transform your family, your community, your country. See what it means to be a part of something bigger than yourself. Transformation begins with us. And it leads to a changed world.
Most people live their life and honestly cannot say at the end of their life that they truly made a difference in the lives of others. You're here because you want to make a difference. What really excites me is your potential. Because when you put great potential that you have with a great heart, passion and potential coming together with intentional living and with a team that supports and cares and lifts and encourages one another. You left average at home. And I promise you that I'm going to give you my best effort. I'm going to give you not only my name, but I'm going to give you all my energy. What is mine is yours. And the reason what is mine is yours is because we're family and we're team. And we do this together because that's the only way it will accomplish. The law of significance says one is too small of a number to achieve greatness. If greatness is going to be achieved, it takes people like us that will determine to make that difference. Now is our time. Today is our day. I want you to understand as we start this journey, this is all within your reach.
Good evening. Want to welcome you all to our regularly scheduled June, I'm sorry, July 17th, 2023 regularly scheduled board meeting. But I also want to welcome District Seven's new representative, Ms. Pat Frey. Congratulations on your election. And we are looking forward to working with you. Would you have a word?
I'm just humbled and honored to be here. Thank you so much.
Thank you, ma'am. Also, we have inspiration.
In the spirit of summer and thinking of all that glorious sunshine that we have and not the heat part of it. The quote is from Helen Keller. It says, "Keep your face to the sunshine and you will never see the shadows."
Thank you very much. I like that. I like that. And so we're doing the pledge of allegiance. This is one of the parts of summer. We have to do it ourselves. We won't have the little precious students to come and lead us in the pledge. So if you would, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. I'd like a motion to approve the agenda. So it'll be a hand vote. Motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Jackson. All in favor of approving the agenda. All right, that passes. Thank you. All right, that's a motion. Okay, just, we're gonna move it right along. And I always try to repeat it because I have the microphone. We're gonna excuse Mr. Cantrell tonight. That was a motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Frey. All in favor is another hand vote. And now we'll recognize visitors. And I did see one of our administrators out in the audience. If there are any other school building leaders, principals, assistant principals, if you would just wave, stand. Thank you so much for all that you do. We're ready to go, right? We're getting there. Of course, we always enjoy our representatives from our library and museum, Mary Ann Richter from the museum and Mr. Lundeen every time from the library. And of course, MEEF, we have Marquette McKnight and board members. And we have a special presentation here in a minute. And then we'll just segue on with that. We'll go right on into Ms. McKnight. If you would come, we have a very special recognition this evening.
Hello, board members and a special welcome to Pat Frey, your newest representative. It is my pleasure, as it always is about this time of year, to present to you officially your MCSD Teacher of the Year. It is a particular honor, and it's kind of interesting that we don't have any students because usually there's always a couple of students who might recognize that teacher. They'd had her before, they had him in another classroom. Tonight, obviously, unless she maybe didn't go to St. Mary's Elementary, so she's not going to recognize our Teacher of the Year. But as some teachers, we're seeing more and more teachers, I think, today, come to teaching from non-traditional roles. Not the paths that went all the way up from elementary school where they always knew they wanted to be a teacher. That was not Tasha Mormon's path. She was a counselor. And as such, I think that gives her a unique perspective in being able to see the whole child. She has a unique ability to look at a child from St. Mary's Elementary Magnet in her classroom and see the unlimited potential of that child. And I think she sort of works her magic at the very beginning of the year, developing a great relationship with all her students so that she can then spend that year inspiring, educating, teaching, learning, and doing whatever she needs to do within our community, asking partners outside of the school system to come in and help her and help the school and help the school system help to make those kids not only better students, but better human beings. I will tell you that on the day the selection committee, and I should have said this at the very beginning, Derek Mann is the MEEF Board Treasurer. So we are especially grateful to have him here representing the MEEF Board today. But on the day the selection committee went into Mrs. Mormon's classroom to observe, they were discussing, and when I say they were, the students were discussing from obviously prior lessons, the reasons for World War II, which were based on some of the reasons from World War I and why World War I, when it ended, caused things to happen. I wasn't the only person in the selection committee that learned a few things in the classroom that day that I immediately went back and told all of our staff at the office these great things that they might not have known, and they didn't about World War II. So I think she's going to do a wonderful job in representing you. And we thank those of you who are at our incredible 1,127 people who attended the gala this year. And we are delighted to present to you your Teacher of the Year, Tasha Mormon from St. Mary's Magnet Academy.
Thank you. I had to look around for a minute. I thought she was talking about somebody else, but definitely me. And I want to first start out asking for your sympathy. I went to the Columbus Lions football game on Saturday, and I'm a big Lions fan, so I did a lot of yelling. So if my voice goes out, I apologize in advance. But thank you so much for this opportunity, being here today and having my voice heard all across the school system and in the community is definitely an honor and a privilege that I do not take lightly. So I would like to thank MEEF for this opportunity to be selected as the Teacher of the Year. Thank you to Muskogee County School District, our school board, and our stakeholders and supporters who choose each and every day to make a difference in our community. A few things have happened since being named Teacher of the Year. I was granted the opportunity to speak for the North Columbus Rotary Club. Thank you, Ms. Chambers, and the Payer Show. Thank you, Ms. Wright. I have been interviewed for the Valley Parent Magazine and the Ledger Newspaper. I will also be speaking before the students on Thursday at the MCSD Summer Commencement Ceremony and the New Teachers Orientation for those coming through the Georgia TAP Program who were like me and were in something totally different before coming on and deciding to be a teacher. Most importantly, this means that I am positioned to be a light to our community and a two-part message. One message is to the community to join forces with the schools that are not labeled success stories or receive all of the different accolades that others receive so that they too feel the support while they are in the trenches working towards the same common goal. And then the second message of which I am most passionate about is in regards to our kids. This message is for those kids who were just like me, who will eventually be me. I was able to find my voice and make a choice to prove them wrong. And if you were to come to my class, you will see a big sign that says, "Prove Them Wrong," and each and every one of my students signed that. But what that means to me, funny thing, is proving them wrong can sometimes be the voices that are in our own heads. And that voice tells us that sometimes we can't because of the environments that we live in or the situations that we go through. But please, please know that the biggest thing is not to fear failure, but please be terrified of regret, as giving up is the birthplace of regret. And to not be afraid of the no's and not be afraid of the not yet, but be afraid of the possibility that a yes that you have prematurely destroyed because you decided to quit before the clock strikes 12. So it is to show them that the very thing they set out to do or be is achievable. When you come from a background like mine's, that is exactly what you do. You make the most of what you have. You don't make excuses. You work hard and you always finish what you start. And when someone needs a hand, you offer yours. Because when you do, one will eventually come back to you. My mom gave me her values as a gift that I cherish so greatly. And I quickly learned that her contribution was far more valuable than money or connections. Once I realized that I had access to all those values, it gave me a set of new skills that I could use for the rest of my life. Skills like resilience and problem solving and time management. I learned to turn all of those stumbles and mishaps into my sources of motivation. A negative comment from a teacher didn't shut me up at all. If anything, it made me ask more questions. And I am to this day still the same way. I realized that what really mattered wasn't how much my mom made or what people said about me. What mattered was in my mind and in my heart. I gained confidence knowing that if my mom and I could make it out of what should have killed us, I can make it out of anywhere. So that is my message that I strive for every child that I interact with to understand. As I read my speech that night on my paper, the very last two words to let me know that I was running out of time was, "Stop now." Now, even though I passed that and went over a little bit, I still remember those words. And as I went to my seat, I thought, what if I had stopped after all those challenging moments that didn't seem like they would work out? Or what if I stopped the moments that I felt defeated? What if I stopped because of the lack of support that I thought I should have been given? I wouldn't have the opportunity to stand here today. That is the power of hope. The belief that something better is always possible if you are willing to work for it and fight for it. Our dedication and the power of hope have allowed us to rise above the voices of doubt, division, anger, and fear that we have faced in our own lives and in the lives of our community. We hope that if we work hard enough and believe in ourselves, we can be whatever we want to be, regardless of the limitations that others have placed on us. The hope is that when people see us for who we truly are, then just maybe, just maybe, we will be inspired and they will be inspired to rise up and be their best selves. That's the kind of hope that each and every one of us should have. Board members, parents, law enforcement, educators, all of us needs to be providing to our young people. Because that is what will move this community forward each and every day. So be focused, be determined, be hopeful, be empowered. Empower yourselves. Lead by example with hope. Never fear and know that we teachers will be with you. We may complain just a little, but we will be with you, supporting you for the rest of our lives. I know this is true for every educator who gets up daily and works their heart out to lift up our young people. And I'm so grateful to all of you for your passion, dedication, and hard work. So on behalf of our teachers and educators in Muskogee County, I would like to end by saying thank you for everything you do to aim to assist us in providing our students and our communities with the best. Thanks.
Congratulations again, Ms. Mormon. Thank you for all that you do. Do you have family with you? We have to recognize family. All right. We are very proud of you. And we appreciate how you represent not just your school, but the Muskogee County School District and now our entire Columbus community. So congratulations again and thank you for all that you do.
Ms. Mormon, I want to also say thank you for representing our profession, but also showing other people the pathway that might come to us from a lateral career someplace else to come into teaching. We need people with your passion, with your purpose and your hope. And I am so grateful you are with us. Congratulations. Thank you.
Now we're moving into our public agenda. We do have someone on public agenda, Ms. Cheryl Williams. The microphone over here. And while you're making your way, I'll read the disclaimer that I read every month. "All official meetings of the Board shall be open to the press and the public. However, the Board may meet in executive session. Speakers' remarks should be directed to the Board and shall be limited to five minutes. Citizens are encouraged to address items on the Board agenda or to initiate presentations of issues appropriate for school board consideration. If an individual desires to speak, they may contact the superintendent's office to be placed on the agenda. The Board meeting or work session is not the appropriate place to address either criticism of particular employees or individual parent complaints. When such complaints have not been addressed to the attention of the appropriate administrator or the superintendent. Citizens are encouraged to follow normal channels to address individual parent complaints or problems." And you may begin now. Thank you so much for joining us.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
The reason that I and we are here, we want to address the Board, myself and others concerned citizens of the community, our concern about the process in naming the new school that's going to merger, St. Mary's and Dawson, how it was done. We don't think that the process of naming the school was handled correctly. We don't know what the community feedback was. Why was the 30 days waiver? The rules was not clear as far as the local and community were concerned. And we had a question, does Naomi has the power to change the rules as she want to make up rules and disregard the other candidate? We think that the school should be named after an educator. After all, that's the big, what's the big hurry? The school won't be ready until August 2024. It looks like a rush to get something done the wrong way. It looks suspicious. And when you turn to the next page, the community out on Dawson Drive with Dawson Elementary, you'll see that you have a picture of Ms. Ollie Tarver that's been in education for over 31 years, teaching at Dawson and St. Mary's. Ms. Ollie Tarver's been coming down to the school board for I don't know how, how long. And every time she comes, she come and pray and give y'all treats. Everybody know the work of Ollie Tarver. So I feel that, and on this page, it has, although, I'm getting ahead of myself, want to follow what I wrote. Although we respect and appreciate the accomplishments of Ms. Mary Buckner, we're asking for the Board to overturn their decision and do the right thing and name the school for one of our very own elementary educators after Ms. Ollie Tarver. Based on the guidelines of the committee that Ms. Buckner put together and they set the outset, Ms. Ollie Tarver is more than qualified in historical, current and geographical features of the community and local area. She's someone who has made outstanding education and society contributions in the local area. She's someone who has significant meaning to members in the school community. So there is no one, and I repeat, no one who has served on the level of capacity she has. Ms. Ollie Tarver dedicated her entire life to education, enhancing the life of children over 31 years. When she began teaching at Dawson Elementary, she had 35 to 40 students in the class. 180 days out of a year to educate. She taught thousands and thousands of children elementary education, our first starters. She has even taught me and seven of my adult siblings that are now parents and grandparents now. Ms. Ollie Tarver has been influential in the hiring of many other educators in Muskogee County School District. We concerned citizens of Columbus feel that it is a no-brainer that the name of the merged school should be named Ollie Tarver Elementary per set guidelines. The person addressing the issue of a person should be deceased. Well, with that, Lonnie Jackson's Academy was named before he passed. A.J. McClung's study was named before he transitioned. For Ms. Tarver's hard work, let's give Ms. Ollie Tarver her flowers while she's living. Ms. Ollie Tarver meets all the qualifications set forth by the committee. Most of you currently sit on the school board are very much aware of Ms. Ollie Tarver's presence and her involvement in the community. She has been before you many times. How could any of us omit and discredit Ms. Ollie Tarver's contribution, dedication, service to children's schools, the community, the school board, the city council through teaching, prayers, suffocations, and giving her time and finances in support of education? Lastly, Ms. Ollie Tarver continuously reminds us that Jesus is Lord over all. That's it.
Thank you so much, Ms. Williams. We really appreciate that. I think somebody asked about Ms. Tarver a couple of months ago.
Ms. Tarver health is failing. So I'm here speaking for Ms. Tarver.
Thank you.
She wanted to come herself. She wanted to put her own name on the list and they told it would be trouble if she did. So that's why I am here.
Well, we appreciate you for sharing with us. Thank you so very much. So this is the month that we have a combined meeting work session. And we're going to, this is our regular board meeting, so we will be taking a vote. So each item, if you have any questions, we're going to, you know, go through our normal process of getting a motion on the floor. Then we'll discuss it and then we'll take a vote after the discussion. So action item 5.01. The superintendent is recommending the appointment of Ryan Willoughby to serve as the Chief Executive Officer of Jordan Vocational College and Career Academy. We do get the agenda ahead of time. So hopefully everyone will have had an opportunity to review the attachments, ask any questions of the superintendent. If not, I would take a motion. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by, motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Jackson. Are there any questions? Hearing none. We are ready to vote now electronically. Hearing none. We are ready to vote now electronically. Did you see it yet? All right, that passes. Congratulations, Mr. Willoughby. You have a few words.
Chairperson Green, thank you so much. I am honored to have received this recommendation from Superintendent Dr. Lewis. Thank you very, very much. I was already excited about this opportunity. I got more excited when I saw that you all began your board meetings with the theme song from Beverly Hills Cop. And I think we're going to all get along very well. Dr. Lewis, I'll let you know as well. If you told me that my first day on the job would be, I would get to see John Maxwell in the flesh, I would have worked for less money, to be honest with you, but we're already past that now. So, in all seriousness, I do want to say it's a tremendous honor to be coming back to Jordan. I am a Jordan alum. I'm here this evening with my beautiful wife, Kristi, and my two daughters. My wife was not a Jordan grad, but she was there briefly. My father is a Jordan alum as well. And it means a lot to me when you're able to come back and give back to someone and to something that has given a lot to you. In fact, I had the pleasure of joining some colleagues that actually educated me when I was a Jordan 20 years ago. And my only hope is that they have a short memory and they don't remember anything there. But it is a tremendous opportunity for me. It's something I'm incredibly grateful for, particularly to work at the College and Career Academy at a time when our nation is in the midst of a serious labor shortage. To know that Jordan is out there producing high-quality young people who are able to go into the workforce to provide for themselves and their families is something I'm honored to be able to do. And so I'm looking forward to joining Principal Hudson, the rest of the outstanding team at Jordan, as we move forward in our mission to be a place where teachers teach, where students learn, where parents participate, and where the community entrusts that the young people we're putting out are present, prepared, and professional and ready for the workforce. So thank you again for this opportunity. I'm very grateful for it. I look forward to working with each and every one of you. Thank you for the service that you offer to this community, and go Red Jackets.
Congratulations again, and just for the record, you don't have to take the little ones out. We are used to noise, cheering squads, hecklers, everything, so. But congratulations and thank you to the family. 5.03. I'm sorry, 5.02. See, I told you, just whatever. 5.02, superintendent is recommending the appointment of Cheryl Licks to serve as Assistant Principal at Midland Middle School. Motion, motion by Ms. Jackson, second by Ms. Chambers. Are there any questions? Then we're ready to vote now. All right, we should be up now. All right, that passes. Congratulations.
To the board and Dr. Lewis, region chiefs, specifically Dr. Wiggins, and the cabinet, thank you so much for this opportunity to serve in this capacity. I'm honored for this opportunity. I really am. First, I must offer praise to the Lord as this has been, this moment, this very moment is in answer to prayers that has been prayed for year after year, very much like Hannah in the Bible. And I just really, it's just beyond my, I don't even know. I want to recognize my family. My husband is on a mission trip in North Georgia, so he's not here tonight. But my daughter is here. She's, we are a very service-oriented family. She's a children's counselor. My husband's a minister. And then, of course, I'm an educator. So ministry and service is our whole life. My daughter and my husband have been both very active in my career. They've supervised field trips and they've participated, they've worked as judges, they've done all kinds of things. They've cooked barbecues at the school. I mean, they've, you name it, they've done it all. They're very active participants. I also have some friends from my church here tonight that I'm proud to have. And my mother-in-law, who's watching live from Missouri. So that's my family. So throughout my career, I have served with some very dynamic leaders who have all poured into me. Some things I would not want to repeat and some things I would want to, you know, model every day. Jim Hayes was my first principal and he took a risk hiring me. He didn't, he wasn't too sure about me, little kindergarten student teacher going to a sixth grade classroom. But I was very eager and excited and he hired me and he really nurtured my ability to help lead our school. And then Ms. Donna Kemp, who is here, she inspired me and urged me to go to graduate school and to really pursue leadership opportunities. So it really all comes back to Ms. Donna Kemp. And then I've had several others. And then Dr. Cook, thank you so much for your leadership and your vision and your guidance through this process and just support throughout my career. She was our dean at Midland. So I've known her for a while, so it's really a privilege to get to work with her. And to the Midland family, as you all heard. Your support and encouragement means so much to me and I'm excited to serve the Midland educators, learners, and families as we, as we move forward together. It's going to be a great opportunity for all of us and we are really proud of our achievements and continue to strive for excellence. As we move forward together, Midland family, remember we did not come here to be average. The pursuit of excellence is hard work, but together we is greater than me. Go Jax. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Okay, wave again, family. All right, and of course, the Midland cheering team. And the church family. All right, thank you all so very much for joining us. Now 5.03 is the review of policy BCBI for public participation. Motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Buckner. Are there any additional questions? We are ready to vote now. All right, that passes. Item 5.04 is a double churches elementary after school. Motion by Ms. Jackson, second by Ms. Chambers. Are there any additional questions? Hearing none. We're ready to vote now. All right, that passes. All right, double churches. Congratulations. In the consent agenda, which would be all of the items that are on our finance committee agenda, there is the personnel report, our minutes from board meetings, the new library board members, our student discipline tribunal for school year 24, the athletic admission prices update, surplus in sale of property and transportation, surplus property for, in the division of school nutrition, purchase exception A and B, which deals with some classroom manipulatives and learning material. 6.09 is purchase exceptions F or invitation to bid. There were three of them. Verco Manufacturing Thomas built for buses and Yancey bus sales. 6.0, 6.10 is the purchase exception G on professional services. Though there were 12 of them there. Sold purchases and volatile purchases is item number 611. That's the fuel inventory. 6.12 is the purchase order increases. Whenever you have a question, Jim. Sure. Which item? Purchase G, professional services. That's number 11. Hold on one second for me. All right, I'm ready.
Those are the teachers that we hire that, to fill vacancies during the year that they work virtually for us. And that we don't budget separately for those, for this contract. We budget the position and you'll see in the budget adjustments that there's a budget adjustment that is moving money from the salaries to cover this contract.
Yeah, and I guess I should have reworded it a little bit. I guess, one, I just, is that how much we've spent in the past on that category and how many positions is that? I know it gave a breakdown, but not in a way us noneducators could really understand, so, sorry. I kind of wanted a little more light on how many positions that is and if this is kind of how we've been tracking in the past couple of years that we've used proximity or if we're seeing a tick in it.
All right. We'll have to follow back up with you on the exact number of positions because it's based on sections and not necessarily positions. And so we will follow up and give you that information.
Sections as in?
Like a section. So they will, we will hire a teacher for three classes, not necessarily hire a full position.
But how does this compare to past years?
I'll have to go back and double check.
You want to share something, Mr. Cypher?
Just in past year's experience, various schools will take the number of sections they may have. They may, for instance, a middle school may have three social studies sections and three Spanish sections and, and you just, based on the numbers and the course requests, that's how we, that's how it's determined the number of sections and the pricing is per section. You may have a teacher that, or a vacancy that you're funding a full vacancy. It just depends on the master schedule to determine the number of sections associated and that's how they charge us by the section. Does that make sense?
It does, and I understand usually it's kind of an amount that means we could go up to it. It might not be. But it is a very significant number, so I would like a little more detail, a little more idea of where it's being used. And I think partly just for myself, we, I don't know, I want to say two years ago, it might have been longer than that, but as many things do, we vote on them and then we kind of get used to it and I don't necessarily revisit it. So I think when I saw this amount, it kind of made me want to revisit and just know a little more. I'm not saying I'm against it. I just want to be more, I mean, better educated on where all that's going and how much we are relying on it.
It may be helpful to know that once I looked over the information about by sections, I was also pretty confused. So what we did was we changed, we've changed the process to streamline it, number one, but we're also doing a look back over the last three years to say how much per, per teacher, per school, and did it cost? And we were able to get that level of detail for, for one year and that they're giving me the other two so that we'll be able to, going forward, again, streamline the process and look at it by the number of teachers and compare that way. And we're looking at vacancies to be able to do that. So that's been very helpful in the direction we're going. We're still fine-tuning it. But I think that if you at least want to look back the last few years, you can see that we really are spending that much or coming close to that.
Yeah, if, like I said, if you have them just provide us with some more detail going forward, that'd be good.
All right, Ms. Chambers?
Yes, I just have a question about two of the items. The first question is about number eight, the $5.5 million to Chantlight. It says this is the first two-year renewal. So are we paying the $5.5 million for both of those years or is that per year?
Every year, it's the $5.5 million, $5.6 million.
So we're approving a two-year?
It's the second year of, of the, you know, we review them every year.
Okay, it says this request is for the first renewal of the two-year renewal option for the school year 2023, 2024.
Yes, so we have the initial year and then we have two renewal years to get us to the three years of the contract.
And what was the amount we paid last year? For some reason, I thought it was six, but was it about the same?
There were, I'll have to verify this, but there was a slight reduction because we ended up moving one of those positions back to.
General fund?
General fund.
Okay, perfect. And my other question was about GSBA. Did we add additional services? Because I thought that one was a little over $3 million last year, but it's over $4 million. I know we do the workers comp and we've, is that property and risk management? Is that new or have we expanded the amount of coverage?
The coverage just went up significantly this year, yes. Especially in the area of the property.
Okay. Okay, that was my two questions. Okay, thank you so much.
I'm sorry, hold on one second.
It's not that long ago. And then with the insurance, remind me how often we kind of price that out to different companies?
We have not priced that out with different companies in the last couple of years that we had done that several times and GSBA was, had been the, the winner. And just the way the process was working, we have decided that we will stick with GSBA for the, for now.
So we really, I mean, when you say how long ago did we price that out? And it seems like we should still have some kind of definitive time to relook at it.
I will look back at when we went back out for that one.
Because I guess I kind of assumed that we had some kind of regular schedule of when, you know, I get that it's cost, I mean, it gets very hard to do it every year, but that we'd have some kind of definite cycle of when we would, you know, circulate that out again to know, because again, that's a significant number that keeps going up and we want them to know that, you know, they've got to be competitive as well.
I want to go back to the question Lori asked about the proximity learning. And I was looking at the personnel report. And, and thank you, Mrs. Carter, you did say you were going to provide that information and we don't have to ask those questions every time about how many vacancies you attach it to the agenda now. So we thank you for that. But I was wondering if we were increasing in vacancies. I noticed that it was about 300 in a total of probably 800 and something vacancies, but about 300 maybe or closer to that were teachers or parent-related. So I'm wondering if we were increasing in vacancies, maybe that impacted the increase for the need for the proximity learning for, which also impacted the, the price.
It, it does have a ripple effect.
It it does have a ripple effect. Unfortunately, I I can say that we're at a transition over the, as you head over the summer and the real allocations. That it's kind of that in-between stage where you don't know exactly what you have as you're assigning and you're hiring at the same time. But I can say that what we have identified is that we allocate proximity learning based on the vacancies we expect. But we don't have to pay unless we actually use the spot. So we rather plan for as if we're going to need to use that slot versus under underquoting.
So what we have is a budgeted amount?
Yes.
Just a budgeted amount and we don't know if we're going to actually have to use that budget?
Right, but we used, I used past data to determine approximately what we think we would have. And speaking with HR partners who are very close to it to determine, do we look like we're having a bit, a few more vacancies that we haven't quite filled yet? And that's that's what dictates what we request and what we pray for. And work very hard is to fill the positions with whether subs or hire somebody to make sure that we close those gaps.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, are there any additional questions? Any other item on this consent agenda?
The tribunal people, there were some stars. There was a list of who the tribunal names. And then there were stars by certain individuals. I was wondering what those stars meant. New, okay. All right, thanks.
I think I may have left off either six thirteen maybe, six point one three competitively bid purchases. Six point one four is the new budget for FY twenty-four. Six point one five are budget adjustments. Six point one six are our monthly financial statements. And six point one seven are donations that we have great public-private partnerships and those donations are listed each month. And so we always like to pause and say thank you so much to our citizens and our partners for thinking about our students in our schools and how they donate and support and all those different ways, particularly financially. Ms. Chambers has a question, yes ma'am?
About six point one four under the new budgets, the bonus for school custodians. I just wondered, is that a one-time thing or is that for everybody? Is that Muskogee County employees? I know we contract out some services for custodial services. And then we have custodial services that are employees of Muskogee County. So can you explain that? Or is it a bonus? What what is that? Can you explain it?
We are looking at, they have not given us all the details on what the requirements are for that, those funds. But there is a short turnaround on when those have to be paid out. So we decided to go ahead and come to the board with it this month. Part of that, it it's it's a hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, I think, is the total. And that was to be used to provide custodians additional funds. At this point, we will be asking the state if the additional funds that they are receiving during this transition period between the semi-monthly and the, or the bi-weekly payroll and the semi-monthly payroll, that it can be used to fund those additional costs that we had associated with that. Or if we will truly then be giving out bonuses to the custodians. And it is only the custodians and it's only the ones that we hired and school-based. Is my understanding right now as to where, how that money was funded to us.
So if we use it to cover our costs, then the custodians won't get additional funds?
The the custodians are getting additional funds right now for the, during this transition period. And it is, it is my intent, if if it is allowable under the grant, to use those funds to cover that cost of that transition.
To include the cost of the transition?
Yes.
Okay.
When, when you say include the cost of the transition, are you saying to include the increase that you've already given to the custodians?
No.
Or that money, are you asking if this money can stay with the school district?
That during the transition from the bi-weekly to the semi-monthly payroll, there were some transition pay periods that we had to do to keep employees whole, so they wouldn't be missing out on checks. And it is my intent to use these funds to to cover those payrolls that we were having to pay to make that transition.
So, so, so let me, so, so let me understand. The state of Georgia is, has designated some money for custodians, period. All right, and it's on our agenda now because you haven't gotten all of the rules of how it is to be dispersed. And what you're telling us is that you're also going to ask that even though these funds were granted, we were in the middle of a transition and to keep everybody whole, you've, you've, you gave some money ahead, fronted some money. And you're going to ask permission for those funds to also be used in addition to these people getting a bonus to include?
No, instead of.
Instead, that's why I asked you include, so it's not include.
It's instead.
Now, if the bonuses, if the, if the funds are for a bonus for the employees, for the custodians, that's what we want. That's what we want to happen with it. Oh, hold on, I'm sorry.
Ain't told to us, because I really kind of glanced at this and I go, oh, that's great, custodians will get a bonus and I moved on. Which is, you know, I I should dig deeper, but we have a combined meeting, so we didn't kind of go through it and so.
Well, that's what we're doing now.
Yeah, but again, I'm glad you asked because I wouldn't have even thought to ask if that was not going to be used as a bonus. I don't in any way want money that the state gave us for a bonus to custodians to go to something that they were already receiving. They should get additional funds from the state funds, in my opinion.
Cur with what Lori just said. I do think that any cost that we incurred by changing the way we pay our employees is because we made a choice to do that. And I don't think they should have to pay for that. I think that if the state is providing money for custodians to receive a bonus, it should go in their pocket and not ours.
All right, anything else?
Well, it it's, it was included, it was either or, so I understand the direction of the board and.
Okay, so we're going to, let's just make, let's, we're going to pull that out and vote it separately by hand, so we won't have any questions or any confusion. All right, that is item.
No, it's included, it's both, language is both there. Because we, as we were working through the particulars with it, I wanted to be able to have that option. So both options were included in the wording of the.
Well, the reason why I'm asking for it to be pulled out, because we really want to be clear on, well, we want you all to be clear on the direction of the board and what we're saying, when money is coming from the state of Georgia, from the governor's office for a specific reason. That's what we want it to be used for. And so if it is your pleasure, we can vote on it separately to make that clear.
No, it is my pleasure that it it is totally removed and brought back to the board next month. And the reason why I say that is because the paper. The paperwork attached, oh, I thought you said we were going to take a separate vote. Because the paperwork attached says the grant will fund the bi-weekly or semi-monthly payroll transition and a potential additional stipend to the schools' custodians. So the language should change.
But I, but for clarity, we need to do that separate. That's what I'm asking the board.
Strike the language.
Let's, let's separate this item, right? So that we can vote, that's right, so we can vote on this item separately. And then we can talk about how, how, what, what, how do you want to do?
But what I want to make, let make clear is that we don't give an affirmative vote to this as written.
That's why we need this separated, okay? Because this is the consent agenda, so let's separate this particular item so that we can be very clear, crystal clear, okay? Ms. Buckner?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Okay, hold on, wait a minute, was that the last thing? I did do, I did donations, I did donation, okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Buckner, hold on, let me, if you would do your microphone, let me.
I'd like to move that we approve this agenda with the exception of item. Except, except, except item three.
Oh, six point one four.
Six point one four.
Is there a second? Second by Ms. McCray. So hand vote on both of them. So we're going to take a hand vote on the consent agenda with this amendment or what are we doing? Vote electronically? Taking the item out?
Oh, six point, yeah.
So we're approv, approving the consent agenda and we're going to vote electronically, right? All right.
We need to, we need to motion it, second it again, please.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Buckner to vote on the consent agenda with the exception of item six point one four, number three? Number three. We will vote on six point one four separately, so we're voting to, we are voting on electronically on the consent agenda, taking out item six point one four, item, action item number, is number four? It's not four? Item number three. Agenda item six point one four, item number three.
And who seconds it?
Is it four, which one is it y'all, four or three? Which one do you have, Karen? So we'll call it by name, all right? We're going to vote to approve the consent agenda. All right. We're voting electronically. On the consent agenda. Minus item six point one four, number three. There was motion by Ms. Buckner and second by Ms. McCray. Okay, y'all waiting on me, but some, something happened. There we go. All right, that passes now, item six point one four. Number three. Hit your microphone for me. Go again.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve six point one four, altering the language to read that the custodians will receive additional stipends. The money going to the custodians.
All right, that was motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Frey. Are there any additional questions or comments, Ms. McCray?
Well, can you provide a little more detail now if that's the way it is, how that'll be paid? I mean, I'm assuming it will only go to the custodians that are, you know, our employees. And will it be this amount of money divided by how many we have and that's what they get? I mean.
It's a thousand dollar, a allocation of a thousand dollar per employee, which we will then have to then fund the FICA portion of that out of the general fund. And and we will have to then look at the details of which custodians that the state has allocated these funds to. Because it may not go to the non-school-based custodians.
Okay, so.
So we don't have the, all of the details at this point to be able to tell you specifically.
Listen, we need to pull it.
Well, my, my concern, well, what I was hoping is that we understand that the budget, this is the budget piece of it, that we would come back with the details of it. And prior to paying that out, we would notify you what the exact details. It has to be paid out before September. And so I would rather, if we can, just approve the budget piece of it tonight and coming back with the details.
And the, and the details should include all of the employees and custodians that we have. How many school-based, how many non-school-based, but all of them. What it, what is the total amount of those additional FICA, those payroll liabilities? That total amount as well as, what else do you want? Yeah, that's what I said, who's included? Those employees that are, those custodians who are school-based and non-school-based. Because how, how, that's going to be something difficult to explain because they're custodians. And they float and they make, y'all do what you have to do to make sure that areas are covered. So that that kind of detail is what we want you to bring, to bring back. Anything else, board members, that you want to see back?
What about when you said you don't know the details of how how it's to be dispersed? So what we also want to know, we want to make sure that they get their bonuses. And we want to make sure that that is in the context of how the money is to be dispersed.
You know, based on, you know, our experience, when the governor decides to issue out money, sometimes they don't understand what it means. And so if they say a school-based custodians, I mean, all the custodians are not in a school. And it's one time. So we have, in the past.
So is that, is that, is that the only stipulation from the state?
I have not gotten the details from the state yet.
That's what I was wondering if there were.
That's what she's waiting on.
That's what I was saying, if that we, in addition to, we are wanting our, we are wanting that bonus, but we are wanting, wanting it to be consistent and in context of what the state.
Maybe consistent is a better word that we've done in the past to be consistent, yes.
And also knowing that we do want the school-based and non-base employees.
That's exactly right.
So I just want to say I am comfortable with voting on it as a budgetary item stating that we will give the money to the custodians pending additional information, absolutely. So I'm comfortable with that so that you can move on and sort of get those details of the grant. But yes, I would like to see the details in the grant. If if you could attach that and send it to all the board, then we know what the grant says. And then what is our plan for paying out the bonus money?
Because I guess, and I, you know, I'm sorry, doing some quick math, I wish I was better at it, but. So I guess the, what we think it is, is they, this one fifty-four, how did we arrive at that amount of money for the grant? I mean, did they stay up to that amount or was that based on? I mean, did they stay up to that amount, or was that based on the one thousand per custodians that we have?
Based on, um, how we reported our custodians during the CPI count.
Okay, so that's how the, this estimate was up there, okay. That makes sense, 'cause I was trying to figure out how we got to that, but, um, I too am in favor of moving forward, um, would wanna be clear that, you know, I think we could use our funds to make sure that all custodians are made whole, that it isn't just school-based, if that's all the, the, um, state gives us, that pretty much anytime we get money like this, we make sure that those that don't come under the allocation also receive it as well.
It's the consistency. All right, so that was a motion by Ms. Chambers, second by Ms. Frey. Are there any additional questions? This will be a hand vote, all in favor. And that passes, there, that passes. We do have the museum report attached. Who is that? Yeah.
For that honor, I can go over.
Yes.
Okay, um, the museum report, um, as it's attached, it says, "The museum launched our summer programs for youth and families during June, offering two-family field trips, storytimes, activity kits, and open studio time. On June seventeenth, artist Gary Pound offered a special self-portrait drawing workshop held at the Bo Bartlett Center, where our exhibition, Facts and Figures: Contemporary Realism, for the Columbus Museum is on view through August twenty-sixth." And they have had a three-day summer teacher institute as well, and they have continued their partnership with the Department of Juvenile Justice in June at their request to provide additional month of programming for their youth. Um, in July, the museum will present a small exhibition, Americans in the Holocaust, the Chattahoochee Valley, at the Columbus Public Library in conjunction with the library's major show, Americans in the Holocaust. Um, with the exhibition at the Bo Bartlett Center and the ex, the continuation of breaking news, Ledger Enquirer photographs through July twenty-ninth, they have three exhibitions on view this month, um, in partnership during the renovation. I think that's very impressive, to do all that while renovating. Um, the library report, yeah.
Um, I was reading a newspaper today, and, um, in regard, I didn't know anything about the Bo Bartlett Center, but there were, uh, you, did you see it, long articles about, um, uh, the Douglas girl, what's, what's her name? It was, uh-
Temple Douglas.
Temple Douglas and, uh, Philouin.
Yeah, Philouin.
Yeah, Douglas and Philouin. They have reached national acclaim with their art, and, uh, I was just so surprised at what they had done and how accomplished they were at such a young age. I wa, I mean, they were so accomplished at this, at that age, and-
You mean impressed.
And then I do, I was impressed, of course, but, uh, I noticed that they both said that they had done something at this Bo Artlet Center, that's, it, for, it now got my attention, you know, because they both talked about that center. And so, uh, and the, uh, I guess whoever was in charge, they made comments about how, uh, impressed they were with these two young people, as I was so very impressed, as I read about them in the newspaper today. Long article about them, and they were very accomplished.
And a Georgia graduate, I'll just throw that out. Okay, the, um, library report, it says passes that can be checked out. Did you know that the library checks out free passes to interesting places all over Georgia? Compliments of our state library, you can check out passes to the Alliance Theater, the Center for Puppetry Arts, Chattahoochee Nature Center, any Georgia State Park, the Georgia, the Go Fish Center, Michael Carlos Museum, Macon Museums, William Bremen Jewish Heritage Museum, or a Zoo Atlanta. Each of our branches has a limited number of passes, so call ahead before you go out of town. That is a wonderful thing to know.
Yes.
And then it has some really nice service stories about the wonderful work that they are doing at the library, and we thank you.
And it's not, um, difficult either, it's not any extra steps to get those passes, um, to the park, so we should be very grateful and, you know, for our museum and our, and our library. Construction status report, Mr. Ward's at the podium.
Hello, Ward Odom, Senior Director of Plant Service Construction. Uh, tonight I'm gonna bring y'all the July construction slideshow. So what we have here, the Mary A. Buckner Academy, uh, front entrance, this is the rendering circling the front entrance. Uh, there is the front entrance in real life where we stand today. The rear northeast corner, uh, picture from the sky of what it looks like, and then we have a little video sweeping from right to left, or east to west.
Is it on an incline, or is it just a video?
I'm standing on a platform out there.
Thinking about-
That we have, okay. Now we have the Arnold Middle School Modernization, uh, of course, the principal is up on the excavator, we removed the keys from that, so, um, inside the main stairwell, uh, it's another handsome group of people. The principal found the key to the excavator and the gym is gone. So that's, uh, that's where the gym used to reside, and of course, it's, it's down and ready for the new foundation to start. Uh, the Arnold, uh, inside the, um, uh, the office area, that's where we, uh, have some work going on. The Columbus High Interior/Exterior upgrades, you got the front steps leading from Cherokee up to the front of the school, and then the front drive, you have the fence work that's going up separating where, uh, the outside public and the students would potentially interact, but that's a nice fence going up. Uh, the HVAC work that's inside the school, uh, both as a hallway and a classroom, that's going in, the cartridges. Uh, Hardaway High HVAC project that's going on, that's the exterior side. We have the Matthews Four Classroom Edition, as you can see, that project was completed. Uh, we had a little internal ribbon cutting ceremony, there's the principal with that, fine bunch of students that attended there. Uh, we have the Richards, uh, the field upgrades, uh, the left-hand picture being Richards and Eddie, both of them are, are being, grade work is being worked on right now. Uh, the museum upgrade, uh, the left picture is the side entrance where the, uh, drive will go, uh, and then you have the Patrick Theater, which the chairs are gone, as y'all can see, but it's empty and underway. Uh, then the Galleria that's in the center, a lot of work's going on, and there's a tremendous amount more pictures and works going on, that's just kind of a highlight. Uh, the South Branch Library, uh, we have the still being erected, if, if you kinda look on the backside, that's where the original building was and still is, and then the addition on. Uh, and then these are the additional projects we have, Hardaway Kendrick, uh, addition upgrades, we're, we're in the planning phase, uh, the athletic field phase three, um, that the completion will be winter twenty-three, twenty-four, and then the winter roofing, uh, Winston Roofing is underway and will be completed at the end of the summer. Uh, and as always, we thank the citizens for the East Plus, without which these projects cannot be completed, so, thank y'all.
Just gonna say, the Richards, um, renovation is on my wall for Alex, so I'd like to keep pace with it, and I do walk in the summer, but I'll walk even more in the fall, so I'll keep an eye on it, it's okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
Ms. Chambers?
It's indirectly related to the report. Um, I saw on the consent agenda that we had several items from Spencer that were making surplus items. Are we going to bid those items out, or have we already done that, or? Well, I know we haven't done that, Kia, but what are we, what's the plan for those items? Do we know?
Can you tell me what agenda item you're referring to? I'm not sure. Are you referring to the school nutrition surplus items? We're surplusing from old Spencer, yes. So that is old equipment that we're no, old equipment that we're no longer using, and so we are going to attempt to sell, as we normally do, through the auction process. Yes. You're welcome.
All right, anything else, board members? All right, Dr. Lewis?
Yes, uh, just a reminder, um, school is starting in a few weeks, so let's make sure if there's, uh, we had the online registration process, so please, we encourage all of our parents to make sure they are completing that process, don't wait till the first day. Unfortunately, we do have people who wait till the last day, and it's, uh, difficult for everybody, so please work in advance. Uh, we do have our summer school graduation, uh, this Thursday evening at seven o'clock at Jordan High School's auditorium. Just a reminder that the first day for school for grades pre-K through two is on August the seventh, followed the next day on August the eighth for grades three through twelve, and that's to allow us to have that, uh, introduction and acclamation for our younger students. Also, really proud of the fact that as part of our P3 2025 plan, we had six hundred teachers, uh, throughout our district, complete the five modules on the science of reading, provided through the Rollins, uh, Institute, Rollins Center for Language and Literacy. They completed all five modules, uh, in preparation for the science of reading implementation, and, uh, it was a massive effort, but really proud of our teachers for un, uh, undertaking tho, that training during the summer. Uh, so we are very proud of them for doing that, and that's gonna pay dividends, obviously, going forward. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Dr. Lewis. Uh, anything else, board members? Execu, all right, we have a- Yes, we have an executive session for a legal matter, that was a motion by Ms. Buckner, second by Ms. Chambers, all in favor? All right, that passes, we're out.